I'd like to call to order the July 11th meeting of the City Council. Please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Dayton, please show that everyone is present other than Mayor Pelchat this evening. And I'll be looking for a motion to excuse Mayor Pelchat. House Member Kurtzwell?
I move to excuse Mayor Pelchat.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Approval of the minutes for June 27, 2022. House Member Kibble?
I have one correction on the third line, the last, at the end of that sentence. The "live and" should be omitted. That's all I had. So I move the minutes as amended.
I'll support.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Kibble. Second from Councilmember Dilk. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Kibble?
I'll make a motion that we approve the bills.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kibble, a second from Councilmember Moser. Any discussion? I have some discussion I'd like to share regarding the bills. As a point of information, I want to provide some background regarding the invoice from El D'Agostini that's contained in the bills for this evening. I noticed the recently repaired old ground storage tank was leaking when I walked by the water plant this past Friday, as evidenced by a rust stain down the, running down the side of the tank. I discussed this with the city manager, who verified the leak exists and told me that we were withholding $170,000 to cover any needed repairs. So in today's bills, the contractor is asking to be paid $321,920 from their $371,092 invoice for the work they did to repair the leak in the old tank. My concern is paying a contractor for a job that was not completed properly since the tank is still leaking. Does the city have the leverage necessary to ensure the contractor fulfills his obligation, including if they go out of business, go bankrupt, et cetera? In my discussions with the city manager, he has stated the money will be there to fix it and there is a warranty. Some of my other concerns are, will there be enough money to properly fix it? Do we know why it wasn't repaired properly originally? Has the root cause of the problem been identified? How much will it cost if they need to undo the work that has been done previously in order to properly address the problem? How long will it take? What are the next steps? Is there a documented plan for the remediation? Will we be able to reliably meet the water needs of the residents during the follow-up repair? To the best of my knowledge, up until about two hours ago, most council members were unaware of the issue. In preparation for tonight's meeting, I asked the city manager to provide the council members with information regarding the situation and to have the engineers and others available to discuss it so everyone on council can understand the issue, ask questions, and in the end, make an informed decision regarding paying this invoice. That's all I have. Anybody have some, any questions regarding this? Councilmember Kibble?
Actually, I'm, I would like to amend my motion to pay the bills except for Fund 592, Department 452, Water and Sewer Construction, to allow the time to receive more specific information regarding what course of action will assure success, the timeframe of the repairs, and what assurances we have financially in the event that the construction company were to become insolvent. I, the stuff that is not part of that $371,000, I think, would end up being perfectly appropriate to, to, to turn over all the rest of the, the bills save for what is in that Fund 592 section. That's the $371,000.
So let me just verify, and I'll ask Councilmember Kurtzwell to weigh in on this. Are you revising your motion or rescinding the original motion?
I'm amending the motion.
Amending the original motion?
Correct.
Okay, so we have an amended motion regarding paying the bills. Paying the bills with the exception of the outstanding amount due to El D'Agostini for the work that they've done on the ground storage tank that is currently still leaking and paying everything else outside of that. Do I have a second for that? Okay, I'll second it.
Point of order?
Okay.
I don't know if you, I'd have to check with the attorney whether the chairperson is permitted to second motions. They're not allowed to make motions, can they second the motion? We operate by Robert's Rules of Order. You don't have an answer? I'd have to take a moment and look at Robert's Rules, but generally the chair does not participate in either motion-making or seconding because the point of the chair is to stay neutral on issues.
House Member Kibble?
The only problem is that the, the person running the meeting still has a vote. So there wouldn't really be any differential between having the idea to support something and to have a vote itself, so.
Point of order? That's not the issue. The issue isn't whether or not he has the right to vote. The issue is whether or not he has the right to place a matter before the debate council. And that, that is the issue. Because right now, without his seconding, the motion doesn't carry, lacks, it lacks support.
Well, perhaps we could just discuss, you know, the, the item that is being excluded and clear up the matter before even having to make a motion.
We can certainly do that, and I'll, I'll rescind my second and I open it back up to discussion. So if we have discussion, if we have questions for the engineers, they are here. If we have questions for the city manager, if anybody wants to understand what the situation is regarding the leaking ground storage tank, now would be the time to ask those questions of the experts that are present. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you. I also was aware of the leak that had occurred in the tank. And the, I did ask the city manager if there was a performance bond on this particular project. And I was told in the affirmative that there was a performance bond. I've done performance bond litigation, so I know all about them. I can assure you, or assure at least myself, that the performance bond more than covers any repairs that will be done to this tank, number one. So I'm not concerned about them walking off the job and not having the money. That's the whole purpose of a performance bond, is that if the contractor does not perform the services, you go in and you make a claim on the bond and you can go hire somebody or another contractor to assist in repairing it. So that risk to me is, is not even there. In terms of getting it repaired, I think those are issues that clearly are being addressed. It's my understanding when I first asked about it is that now is not the time when people are watering their grass and we have certain pressure levels in those water tanks, that we should be emptying a water tank to do a repair. So, so it made perfect sense to me to have the repair done in September. As to why the repair has to be redone or recalculated, that is the matter of what happens when you have a construction project. I've been on many construction projects when many things have had to, it's called a punch list. And many things have had to be redone or whatever, but it does not overall affect or impact the, the project, the major project itself. So although you have interesting questions, I don't find them sufficient to withhold payment to this vendor. Thank you.
So just that I'm aware of how things will flow. We pay for the repairs and then we are reimbursed potentially with the bond if, if they are insolvent?
Well, that would be the question for the city manager if he wants to, first off, explain how much we have in the bond. Because again, the information's been provided on a patchwork basis. Originally, I was told we had $370,000 in holdback and then it was changed to $170,000. And then, you know, note that he put together today mentioned the bond. So if you want to give us the background on exactly what we have to ensure that things are covered, Paul, that could probably be helpful at this point.
Yes, there is $170,000 that's in retainage. I advised Councilmember Kennedy about, when we were talking numbers, I said 370, not 170. 370 was a, a bill or a total. $170,000 is retainage that is actually held back as part of the project. There is also a one-year, or one-year guarantee regarding the tank warranty that we have. There is also a three-plus million dollar maintenance and guarantee bond that's on, that's on the project as well. This particular, we had the one tank that was built and constructed, the other tank was a repair. As part of that repair, they drained the tank, put grout in, did a liner. It says grouting on the bill, it's actually grouting and liner, so that's, they just call it grouting. It's repair on that existing tank. And then it was refilled and the tank is in full operation. We discovered by, with assistance from our engineers at the, we found that there is a space, a place in the location of the tank that was actually still leaking. We contacted the contractor. We're working out details, maybe the engineers can provide that, what the timeframe is. Right now, we're looking at it and making that additional repair. Because the repairs were made as the tank being drained, right now, we do not want to drain that tank due to the fact of the high-peak usage within the city during the months of June, June, July, August, and then part of September. So that would be the time that we would make the full repair on the interior of the tank. We can make temporary repairs to try to prevent any sort of leaking. We didn't deem it as anything that was excessive. That's why we worked with the contractor and say, what did we find? We see a leak, okay, let's get that repaired. That's why nothing was reported, just as if we do a large concrete pore. We see a concrete section that's damaged, and we're not necessarily saying we're not paying the whole bill. There's just a section of concrete that needs to be repaired, so that's what we're doing in this particular case. The particular dollar amount that you're looking at tonight, I believe, believe has payment for a part of the filters, part of some electrical work, as well as grouting. And what we deemed is that, you know, 99-plus percent of the grouting or the liner is actually working, is working fine. If it wasn't working fine, there'd be much, many more leaks around the whole tank. But we see it there on the front, so we feel that it wasn't repaired properly. We would not know until obviously the tank is filled, we notice that particular leak, and the engineers, engineers are working with the contractor on a timeframe to get those repairs, repairs made. But we will not make full repairs on the interior of the tank until after we actually drain the tank. But we can make temporary repairs by looking at the outside to try to see the full scope of where the damage or where the leak actually may be occurring.
House Member Kibble?
The, the idea of the bond, how, why was that kept from us? I mean, that certainly changes the dynamics and concerns about the financial stability of our being able to make sure this works.
What, what do you mean the bond was kept for you?
That's the first I've heard of it, so.
Oh, we have a bond on every project that we do within the city. I, so any project that we do, you know, sort of large-scale project, there is those performance bonds or guaranteed bonds that do in fact insure us, the city, whether it's a cash bond or a bond that's actually held in escrow someplace. In case a company does in fact go belly up or something happens where they do not complete the work, we have that ability to get that money or seize that money in order to complete the project. That'd be the same if there was a water main project, a road project, or anything like that. There's always bonds on, on major projects like that.
It just seems like that should have been in the forefront to alleviate anybody's concerns about this, so.
And I, and I sent, when I sent the information to council, because Councilman Kennedy asked me if I'd provide some information to council, because I deemed the, the issue not being a major issue because we saw a leak. We're working with the contractor to get it resolved. We want to make sure, if there was anything major, I would definitely report it to council. But today, when I sent that email out, I made sure that everybody knew that there was a $3 million bond on the project, as well as the one-year warranty, as well as a retainage. You know, if, if council deems that they think that they should hold back some of the money for that, for that particular project, a certain percentage, I don't think that's going to be issue, you know, would be a major issue. I just don't want to hold back the progression that we're making because this project is almost fully complete and we want to still stay in, in good works with not only that contractor, but also the subcontractors that they hire also. And if you need, our engineers are here to help answer any questions regarding the contract because it is a 238-page document, so they're well, more aware of everything in it.
So in the meantime, we're, we're going to stay in tough because we, we need the water through the summer months. So nothing's going to take place except for getting the fence up over there, right?
No, the fence will be installed, but we're going to work with the contractors to see if we can make a repair.
The fence will be installed.
Yeah, but we're also going to work with the contractors to check out the extent of that, what that leak actually is, so we could potentially make a repair on the outside of the tank. And when everything's completed, we make the full interior repair and so, then, because we will not sign off on this until this project is complete.
It, it seems remarkably unlikely that they're going to want to try to put grout in when it's already leaking through that location. There was never a, a sense that that was a fix when all the rebar and wire was sticking out. So why we would end up carving that away now while it's full of water seems like a real, like out of the, out of the norm kind of a, an approach to fix that. It was completely bone-dry when they ended up, before they were able to put that liner in there. I mean, it had been cooking with wa, or air passing through it for weeks, if not a month. So it would end up being completely dry so they could do what they needed to do. The idea that we're going to just breach that exterior that's just been put on there and is failing just seems like a real lark to me.
And, and I was going to say, maybe our engineers can comment on the last repair that was made when we had a full operation of the tank, that, that particular repair in an area was made and lasted approximately five to seven years. And I'm not sure if that particular repair was made when the tank was completely dry or if the tank was actually full. Maybe you can comment on that, like, they might get closer to the mic so they can hear you.
When we talk about the tank repair, we're looking at more of a pressure injection, not necessarily scraping away and putting grout on it. So it'd be a pressure-injected grout, which is similar to what happened before. So now they have this liner in there, and the liner's put on by hand-rolling, like in epoxy, like in multiple layers. So it's not like it's, it's easy to put on, they gotta put it on, you gotta measure the thickness. They come back the next day, they put another layer, you measure the thickness. So in doing that, somewhere, water probably up high is getting into the wall and, like, coming out this spot. So if we pressure-inject this, it'll stop the leak for now. And then in the fall, when we're out of peak demand, you can get in there and, I mean, this is like black paint in there. I mean, like, you gotta get in there with lights and look. And the pro with doing the pressure injection, if there is somewhere where the water's coming out, you're going to see where that is from this pressure injection. And that will be the spot where they, you know, could tape it up and put a couple more layers of this liner on. But we can't do that until, until the fall.
So the liner bonds to itself?
Yes.
Okay.
And any repairs we're doing now are similar to other repairs that were done as part of this project. There were spots where they had to fill in and where rebar was showing. So it, I think timing is kind of what is making us a big issue is because they pushed this so close to the peak demand that you don't know there's a leak until you fill the tank. Once we fill this tank and it passed, it's in service. There's nothing we can do. So they filled the tank, you know, a couple days later, there's a rainstorm. Kind of saw some moisture, we're like, oh, did that come in from the rainstorm or is that from in the tank? You know, we figured out it was most likely from inside the tank. Nothing they could do about it right now other than possibly this pressure injection. And then in the fall, we'll do the full inspection.
If I could, what was the, the duration of time that, that it took to get it to where it's at to be able to put water in? How much, how much work had taken place on a calendar?
For the li, to put the liner in?
For, for fixing the, all the breaches that were out there?
It took about a month.
Okay.
I would, yeah.
So if we, how, how many months do you anticipate running that tank before we end up shutting it down to be fixed?
Probably two to three months. We'll work with our, our maintenance personnel to try to determine what's the exact time, but we're probably looking at least mid-September.
Okay, so we're looking at three or four months before we can get in there to attend to that. So what, how long do you anticipate the repairs to take?
A week.
I'm just trying to see, are we going to end up being able to be through this before winter becomes an obstacle?
Yes, and now we have another 600,000 gallons of water, so.
And we don't have the same demand in, leading into that, that's true.
So it, other than having a leak, we are in a good position with it.
Okay. Well, I'm not comfortable to, to give them the 371, quite honestly, but, I mean, if others feel differently, that's, let's vote.
Just, just a question for you, Mike. So you're speculating the leak is, the water is getting in from the top because other people have speculated it's where the walls meet the, the base. But that's your best guess on where it's coming from, or?
Well, it's got to be above where it's coming out. I don't think it's coming in.
You don't think it's running and the force is pushing it up?
I, no.
Okay. I mean, because other people have speculated that. I'm just curious what your level of confidence was on it.
50/50, I guess. I mean, it's, it's 100.
Better when it gets, when it gets empty.
Yeah, it's a million gallons of water sitting there, so.
Question?
Yes, Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Okay, thank you. If the water, if, if it had been coming any lower than the top, would you not have noticed it as pressure was building and you were filling the tank?
As you're filling the tank, that, that's my feeling.
Thank you. Thank you.
And it really, you know, obviously it's irrelevant until we find the source and actually just fix the thing.
I, I mean, the source is most likely just a little gouge somewhere or something, too. It's, it's not like we have a full fountain out there, so.
Okay, Councilmember Kurtz, or, Kibble?
You have a question?
We have, are you, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Dilk?
And I'm a little confused with the hesitation of some of my councilmembers. Is there, are we feeling like there's negligence involved in this?
No.
And is there, do we feel like this leak is, you know, disastrous of some kind? All right, thank you.
I mean, that's, that's a lot of water, that's a big tank.
Yeah.
Part of me is surprised that there's not more leaks.
Okay.
If I could.
Councilmember Kibble?
At the same time, this was the deliberate, specific thing that we were doing with that tank was amending the failings that had happened earlier. So for that to be the very first thing that happens, is it starts leaking as soon as we put water in it, is a little alarming to me. I don't know, so.
Councilmember Hanson?
Just so I understand, the, the process as far, as far as approving the payment, do we approve the payment and then they get paid, and then we wait two or three months and then they do the work? Or is the work, are, are we paying them after they complete the work?
No, they'd be, they'd be paid, you know, in a check cycle. But we're still holding that retainage. I mean, that, that's a pretty considerable amount, that's 5% of the contract amount.
Guarantee.
Yeah, so you, you have that. I mean, this is no different than, you know, we put in five miles of water main in the city. You know, you put all this main in, you pay him by the foot, and you've paid, you know, you know, $300,000 pay estimate. And, you know, we still haven't tested the water line and put it in service yet, but you've already paid it and you're, it's just a cycle that you're paying as you're going and then eventually get to the end of the project. So we're going to get to the end of the project and we're going to keep money back till this is fixed. And we've already told the contractor, talking, we're talking to his sub, we're talking to the manufacturer of the liner. So it, things are happening, it's just the timing here.
You're confident everything's going to be fine?
Yes.
I guess the more important part is beyond just the retainage, is the performance bond that overarches the entire project, right?
Yes.
Okay. So any other questions for the HRC representatives? Okay, based on the provided information and the uncertainty regarding whether or not I can second the motion, I'll withdraw my second. And so Councilmember Kibble's revised motion will not pass. And I guess I want to get a new motion for the bills, just to make sure we, it's clear what's getting paid. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, I move the bills as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Kurtzwell, second by Councilmember Hanson. Council, City Clerk Dayton, let's, let's take a roll call on that so everybody's clear on what's, what's being agreed to.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Dilk?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Move on to the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Dilk?
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment. Open the floor up to public comment, remember the two-minute time limit. Please state your name and, and address for the, the record, should you have anything to say. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Move on to the discussion of downtown with the DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right, thank you. Good evening, council. The farmer's market again last week was nearly full, with about 50 vendors. Let me move this up, I think. I won't. You know, it's, it's been a great season so far. Diane has done a good job, I mean, every week, you know, people coming down there. And we're having hundreds, if not thousands, of people show up, well, a thousand maybe, show up at the market. I want to thank the Department of Public Works. They have started to move the two picnic tables from where the market shed is to closer to the intersection so that people can sit and enjoy their food when the food trucks are there. Yeah, the market's continuing to go well, so strong numbers there. The board is meeting this, the DDA Board is meeting this week on Thursday. The agenda for the meeting includes a recommendation for a new board member as well as officers for the DDA Board, which include Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, and Treasurer. The DDA Economic Vitality Committee met last week. We discussed kind of the ideal business mix of what we'd like to see for downtown. I was able to get some information from Oakland County that kind of shows what would be an ideal business to locate downtown. They're able to pull some data that they have access to and they, they shared that with me. We'll be doing, working with SEMCOG on a shop local video they'll be producing. That's not only for the downtown, but for all of the businesses in South Lyon, or, or community-wide promotional piece. They said it's going to be about 30 seconds, they're going to come and do some filming in town, I believe, towards the end of this month. And then we'll have that ready for the, the peak shopping season. Let's see here, the bookstore for sale downtown. That was listed on Thursday, June 30th. By the next day, there was an offer, or there's still a contingency on that. I've heard a couple of conflicting reports, so there's nothing that I want to go on the record tonight saying that I know what it is, because I don't yet. And then finally, the clock downtown. I spoke with Jeff, our Chief of DPW. He had spoken with the vendor that had been working to get that fixed. Apparently, there's some oil inside of the clock that needs to be either like changed out and the hands need to be tightened and potentially something with the gears as well. So they're continuing to work on that. Hopefully, we will have the right time. So with that, I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
House Member Hanson?
Have you had any conversations with the Tenpenny Store? I know that their flower bed or whatnot was hit. I did see that they put some of the stones back up, but I wasn't sure if they were going to try to make it better or fix it up even more, but.
Uh, no, I have not had conversation with them, but I'll follow up with them and see.
And as far as the farmer's market, a few meetings ago, you were still looking for some sponsors and whatnot. How's that going? Are there still open spots, or?
Yeah, there are a few. There are, I'm waiting to get a logo from one person or one organization that has sponsored the farmer's market, but we could probably, we probably have about six spaces left on the board right now, so.
Now downtown, there are still a couple dead trees. Is there any plans as far as replacing those and?
So yeah, that's kind of, I mean, we can get the, the dead trees removed. That's kind of, replacing the trees overall is kind of a longer-term streetscape plan that I've been working on. I've gotten some information on different types of trees that are good to have downtown. There are some that, you know, have leaves that are really tiny that, when the wind blows, they go into stores, they're hard to sweep out, that type of thing. So I've been looking into what types of trees would be best to. So I've been looking into what types of trees would be best to have downtown. And as we have, trees die, or we need to replace certain, you know, certain trees, we're gonna be looking to do that, so.
Is there a plan, especially with like, um, you know, planting trees typically you want to do that in the fall? Is there a timetable where you could have a list or at least a proposal so that we can discuss it, uh, before, you know, planting season's over in the fall? Or getting, getting them replaced?
To replace the trees currently. Um, not at the moment, but again, that's something that we can, we can look at doing at the DDA.
Councilmember Dilg?
Thank you.
I, I just wonder, um, when you're talking about different stores that are, you know, um, businesses that we want downtown, what is, like, what is your role, or what are you able to do, um, when we have a vacancy or we know about a vacancy? Um, I know that at that, at one point when the, uh, when you had people who wanted to open a winery, that you walked them around to different, um, places. But what do we do to proactively, um, you know, try to get the, the right kind of businesses down?
Yeah, so, I mean, it starts, I guess it's kind of, uh, um, the DDA, part of the DDA's role is to try and get the ideal business mix to come to the downtown. So, working with the committees, working with the DDA Board, working with downtown business and property owners, well, mostly property owners. Um, I have people that contact me that are interested in opening businesses in South Lyon. Um, you know, before we had some vacancies on, uh, Lake Street, I had people contacting me saying, hey, you know, I'm interested in opening a business downtown. What space have you got? And at the time, I said, we don't have anything at the moment. So, kind of keep a, a running list of those people that are interested, reach back out to them to say, hey, are you interested in opening a business in downtown? But coupling those contacts and those connections and the work with the DDA, the information that the county is able to provide to us through the Main Street program, um, we're able to say, you know, based off of demographic data, information that we've pulled from, we can essentially call it a market study. It's not exactly that, but the information that they're able to provide us with says, these are the types of businesses. The number one was like a, a grocery chain. Uh, number two was a PGA superstore, so I don't think we'll get that, but, um, we can say, you know, based off of the information that we have, our demographics, household income, where people are coming from, what they're shopping for, what the type of retail needs that we have in the downtown as far as what we can support, um, your business is uniquely suited to our downtown area. And so when we make that pitch, it can kind of help to convince them, because, you know, I'm not gonna say to somebody, hey, you should come to South Lyon, because I think you'll really like it. They're gonna wanna say, see, well, how am I gonna make money, basically? And so to be able to provide them with actual numbers and data that shows that they would be successful, or be more likely to be successful here, is the approach we're trying to take.
And I, I was thinking it from the other end also, how do we, um, convince, um, an owner to, uh, to sell or to, you know, put a business in like that? You know, that we think is good for the community.
Yeah, and that, again, that comes back to, you know, the work that I'm able to do, you know, targeting specific types of businesses. If we've identified something that we want to have in the downtown, and, I mean, you can just go to people and say, hey, are you looking to expand? And if they say yes, I'd say, okay, come to South Lyon, we can, I'll walk you around and we can talk. Um, if they're not interested, then try somebody else.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble?
You said something about a board member for DDA. Is this a new seat, or is it to fill a seat?
It's to, so it's Gene Carroll's seat. He resigned a couple of months ago, I believe. So it would be a new board member to fill out the remainder of Gene's term, which would be about the full term, because he was just reappointed this year, I believe.
About what?
The, the full term, the full four years.
Oh, I see.
Because he was just reappointed in, uh, January, so.
Oh, okay, all right. So it, all right, it's not an additional seat then, all right.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Nate? Thank you very much, Nate.
Thank you.
Move on to the Fire Chief Report with Chief Thorington.
Good evening. Uh, so far up to date, we've had 565 instances. Um, on July 6th, we had a spray park, uh, where the kids across the street there in Whipple. Of course, it was the coolest day of the week. It was in the nineties on both sides, and it was low seventies, but we still had a pretty good turnout. Uh, kids seemed like they had a lot of fun. We're having another one on July 20th from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., same parking lot. And we'll do that on our social media. It's on there now. We'll repost it as it gets a little closer. Um, our night shift is working out pretty well. We've got somebody on shift now 24/7. Uh, we'll help our response times and decrease any kind of delays. Our groundliners recently tested by UL. Um, they all passed, so. Uh, we have the training house over on Pontiac Trail. It's a demo house. We, uh, smoked it up pretty good with a fake smoke machine. Um, the search and rescue, buddy breathing, so a firefighter down, the firefighter goes in and taps into their, their SCBA system, their breathing system, and gets them out. So it's, it was a good training. And it's all safe smoke, so if somebody runs out of air for real or whatever in that situation, where they're messing with the hoses, they can take their mask off and everybody's okay. I do have two city ordinances, uh, proposals will be on the next council meeting. It was in the packet this week. One of them is for I Roll. Uh, currently, whenever a private business has an inspection on their sprinkler system or their alarm system, they do a trip-up kit paper report, and then they mail it to the fire station, and then our fire inspector gets them and looks into them. There can be significant delays in that process, whether they don't mail it on time, we don't see it right away. If any kind of critical attention is needed by us in the fire department, it can be just delayed. So this system, a lot of communities out there are using this system, um, is immediate, goes in the system. And if it isn't alert, uh, inspector and myself will give an email saying it's alert, and you'll be addressed right away. Uh, so it's a pretty good system. And the last one, just a date change on the hydrant inspections. Our inspector would like to move it so that they're not inspecting hydrants throughout the winter, just for ice issues and things like that, so. Any questions on that?
Questions for Chief Thorington? Thanks a lot, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like for tonight for Chief Sowick, we have Lou, Lieutenant Baki stepping in.
Thank you. I've got a few things here to talk about tonight. Um, over the weekend, we had administered an naloxone. So we had naloxone, seen it, had an overdose. Um, officers did administer up to six doses. Uh, the individual did come out of it and went to the hospital, so that was an naloxone. That was a good thing that, that happened. Um, our cadet recruit is going to start the academy, who we are sponsoring. She's gonna have her orientation on the 15th, and then start the full academy on the 19th, or I'm sorry, on the 18th. And that'll be over at, uh, Schoolcraft. Um, we are still looking for a cadet and a crossing guard, so if you know anybody interested in those positions, feel free to let me know. Um, we are also tomorrow are going to do some rescue task force training with the fire department over at Hardy. Um, this is one of the things that we're starting to get back into, um, after COVID, to do these types of, uh, this type of training. That's where we go ahead and do active shooter roles, and then we go in with the, the fire department to, uh, do patient assessments and then go, uh, after the, uh, the shooter. This is not a, it's not like a semunitions where we're shooting things at like rubber bullets or paint. It's just one of those things we're going through the motion while they're doing their thing. Uh, Command's gonna set up an incident command, uh, structure, so we can go ahead and go through what we, we need to do on our end. So that's gonna be tomorrow. Um, and I checked on our truck, and that looks like it's gonna be in hopefully sometime the end of August or early September of this year. So we're pretty excited about that. Think that is, oh, I'm sorry, and also our administrative assistant started today. Um, she, uh, has seen Patricia, got all the paperwork done. We're getting her all set up with all her passwords. Um, so we're real excited to have her. She seems to be gonna fit in real well.
Any questions for Lieutenant Baki? I have one. How about an update on the duck rescue?
Oh, uh, yeah, I was talking to Officer Shroff. He, uh, said it sounds like they're doing okay. He's, he said he scuffed his boot trying to get him out of there or whatever, but he said he did well, and I think everything was, went well for that.
And, and how many were rescued?
Uh, you know, I don't know offhand. I'll have to check on that. Um, seven, was it seven? Yeah. Was it, was, yeah, yeah.
Whatever it takes, right?
Right, right.
Excellent, Doug. I appreciate it. Thanks so very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we have no unfinished business. Let's move on to new business. And item number one is the purchase and installation of fire station water softener unit. Uh, Chief, uh, Thorington probably provided some information on this.
Hello again. Uh, currently, there's no system in the station at all. And it's just as hard in the appliances, it's hard in the trucks. Uh, and it's just hard in the system in all, all in all, I guess. So we need a water softener. Uh, received three bids. Uh, we checked all three of them. Were commercial level twin, uh, twin-stage water softeners. And the lowest, uh, bid came back from Advance at $5,000. And it looks like the biggest difference is a lot of them are pretty expensive in the isolation of the tank, the truck tank fill. And Advance was the lowest cost in that. All the softeners are kind of in the same ballpark, so.
Any questions for Chief Thorington? Councilmember Hanson?
Just a comment. Uh, I, I got my water softener through Advance, and they, the system that I saw in the packet, honestly, is very similar. Um, looking at the one that I've got in my house, and it's worked great. Uh, they've got great customer service, so I was kind of impressed that they came in at the lowest bid. That's great.
Yeah, excellent.
Councilmember Kibble?
You see their trucks running around in town here pretty regularly, so I'm, I think that they have a lot of action in this area, so it should work out well.
Yeah, up to a local lot of, I think Hamburg, I believe.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dilg?
I just wanted to move to approve the installation and purchase of a water softener in the amount of $5,000 from account line item 101-336-972.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dilg, a second by Councilmember Kurtzwell. City Clerk Dayton, will you lead us in a roll call vote?
Moser?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Don't go away. New business item number two, replace two small round drains with two nine-inch trough drains.
Yes. Um, for some reason, in the fire station, there is all these, I think there's a picture in your packet. Um, they all have these trough drains, except for we've got two small round drains under our engines. And, uh, they overwhelm pretty quickly, and pretty soon we have a big muddy mess. Um, it just doesn't make a ton of sense to have a small residential-sized drain in a commercial setting. Uh, the other trucks have the, the trough drain, and it's fine, works fine. Um, where I came from had trough drains, so we're just gonna, we're asked to replace those two drains. Um, when I first came in as fire chief, I res, I had the initial bid from Allied. I looked at it, and it's like, holy cow, that seems pretty crazy. Um, so I get two more bids. And the one bid is a one person. Um, he did a lot of work for Dearborn. He did a lot of small jobs for Dearborn. He went through their purchasing process. We've used him in the past, and so I, I know of him through that. So I reached out to him. That's how we got the bid from Kerry Curtis, who is a little bit, I don't know him personally. He just does work for Dearborn, so.
Council, Councilmember Kibble?
So we have, uh, insurance certs and everything from him that.
We do.
I mean, that's the kind of stuff that I always enjoy seeing in the packet, just so we don't have to wonder. So, if there's some other gear that you gotta have, that'd be great. Thanks.
For sure.
Councilmember Hanson?
Well, you've probably overheard us, especially in previous council meetings, uh, you know, asking for similar quotes and that sort of thing. Can you tell us a little bit about why Allied was like, not even in the same ballpark, like a whole different field, team relocated? I mean, it's like.
I have no idea. And if, if you look at that same quote, there is a quote for the floor to resurface it, which is just astronomical. I've got another quote that, I've only got one of the quotes so far. I'll have to go for another, um, but they're significantly higher than that. I don't know if it's because of a private company or a big company. I don't, I don't know. I have no idea.
That was the 41,000, like, pre-epoxy coating in addition to the, the drains or something, or?
Yeah, yeah. There's two epoxies. If you look close, there's one for the station, and there's one for the ambulance bay. Sorry.
I figured I'd ask, because it just seemed.
No, it is outrageous. And that was the reason I started looking closely for, um, people that we've used in the past and that I knew was, uh, legit, so.
Councilmember Kibble?
Just, um, a, a point of information is, those are the kinds of outlier things, though, when they're so dramatically off the scale of what the other bids are. They're kind of defeating the purpose of three bids. You know, if they're not in some kind of a competitive, uh, nature, it's really a throwaway. So, um, you don't get the advantage of having somebody competing with two other like kind of entities, so. Um, we've had a, a few things where, and sometimes it's difficult, but it would seem to me that, um, masonry would end up being something that would, you could find more contractors that would be interested to do something like that, so. I mean, it's nice that you have somebody that you already have trust in. Um, that, that makes things a lot easier. But, um, unless that third bid, just go, go into the yellow pages.
There's no doubt.
Thanks.
Councilmember Hanson?
I will, uh, make a motion, uh, to approve the removal of two round drains, saw cut the concrete floor, and replace with two nine-foot by one-foot trough drains totaling approximately 5,000 from the account number 101-336-978.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Dilg. City Clerk Dayton, will you lead us in a roll call?
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
New business item number three, change orders for the capital improvement project at the water treatment plant.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. The water treatment plant is nearing completion, and to improve efficiency, we are presenting several change orders, uh, as part of this final completion. Tonight, uh, we have the change orders are outlined within your packet. The staff, city staff and engineers are here to answer any questions you may have regarding this. Tonight's course of action is approve or deny the change order number three for the water treatment plant, resulting in a total contract increased price of $168,060.99 out of line item number 592-452-802.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
I move to approve the change order number three for the water treatment plant for $1,680,168,060.99 under line item 592-452-802.
I'll support.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Kurtzwell, a second by Councilmember Dilg. Any discussion? So regarding the change order, and item number six in the change order, where we've been billed $117,000 for a bypass. In the contract, it's, states that the approved contractor is required to go through a series of valve installations in a certain sequence, then complete that installation within 24 hours without disrupting the, uh, continuous, uh, you know, provision of water to the, uh, the, uh, city. Elsewhere in the contract, it says, if the contractor is not able to do that, they would need to install a bypass. So, and they agreed to that, so if they were told, if they couldn't do that, they would need to install the bypass, why are we being charged separately for the bypass?
Easy answer to that is, there was one valve in the water plant that controlled, um, draining and filling the tank. Uh, working with city staff, we didn't feel confident that we could shut that valve off for, and give the contractor the time they needed. Um, and our biggest fear was not being able to get that valve open. So we could not provide the 24 hours for them to do the work is the main reason.
So whose decision was it to allow them to charge for the bypass? Was it HRC's decision that you couldn't, they couldn't do that job in 24 hours, though the contractor signed the contract agreeing to that condition? Or that he had to do the bypass, and he didn't think he needed to do the bypass, maybe didn't include the cost for it in his original bid? And then you changed course during that and said, you're gonna need to put the bypass in, bill us for it?
Sorry, not exactly. Sorry, not exactly that order of operations there. Well, so we looked at it and we told them, hey, you know, kind of, we don't think we can shut this valve, you know, kind of what are our options? We kind of worked through it with city staff, with contractor, trying to figure out different, you know, ways they could do this. This ended up, with the bypass ended up being, they told us the bypass was not in their bid. They said they can get the valves in 24 hours, which they did once we got the bypass in, so. I, you know, they weren't lying about that. So we looked at it and went through and there's a lot of positives by having the bypass. It allowed them to, you know, always provide water to the city. We didn't have to worry about opening and shutting that valve that, you know, might not work. And it, a bigger thing too is there's residential people there. And this allowed them to do the work during the day. They didn't necessarily have to have crews there working through the night, you know, making all those sorts of noise. What else was there? There was a couple positives to having this bypass. And there's valves that are in place now that the city can use in the future if needed was another reason.
So let me, let me try to understand that. We, and when, when the contract was written, you wrote the contract, HRC basically. And we expected this contract to replace those four valves in a given sequence. And we didn't know that the valve wouldn't close. We didn't try the valves, we didn't exercise the valve prior to the contract being written. At some point, we found out that the valve would not operate. And then we gave the guy a pass and told him, go ahead and put the bypass in. Okay, because again, we didn't check out the valve ahead of time to know that it wasn't gonna operate and that it was unlikely that he was gonna be able to contain that job within 24 hours. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you wrote the contract, you expected him to do it in 24 hours, but didn't verify that the conditions were such that they could actually do that. And then he had to charge extra for that job as a result of not being able to close that valve and do that job in 24 hours. Is that accurate?
I could step in for, for a second. I think you're definitely walking down the right road and you're kind, I mean, we don't want to be backed in the corner. The way I would describe it, just from a different type of view, is we set up the plans, the specs, assuming that the valve would, that the valve could be operated and it could be successfully operated open. And we assume that the contractor could close the valve, cut in, cause there's a piece of, a section of pipe between the plant and the above-ground tank. We thought we could close the valve, cut in those tees, put in valves, re-operate everything. So we didn't, we did not spec for a bypass to be installed. Had we spec for a bypass to be installed, the contractor would have included that work in his bid. So in my simple terms, what I'm trying to describe is we didn't specify that he had to put in a bypass, so we didn't bid on that.
Right.
So we were hoping best-case scenario, it works well, everybody's comfortable, there's a level of safety that the city's comfortable with. So we will make this assumption that they'll be able to cut in without a bypass. Comes down to brass tacks, we decide we're not quite comfortable, work with city staff are not quite comfortable. So let's install a bypass that could have been included in the base bid but wasn't. So at the end of the day, we were taking a risk that the project could have been done for less, less money, less expensive. But the realities of the situation dictated that the bypass should be added as a change order. So the way I would say it is we could have included in the beginning, you would have been paying for it in the base bid. Or you could have been paying it, paying for it in a change order, which is what, which is what we're bringing to you today. So the hope was that we could make it an easier option in the bid documents, knowing that there might need to be a bypass. Hoping that you could close the valve, make an easier connection. In reality, we weren't comfortable doing that. We didn't want to endanger the water service to the city, so that's why it comes as a change order. So the way I would look at it is you could have paid for it in the original bid, or you could have paid for it as a change order. You didn't have to pay for a change order, you would have saved some money. But either way, you could have, you could have included the bid upfront, or if needed, it could have been added as a change order, so it, and it's still a lot of money, I'm not trying to discount $117,000, but it was either, could have been included in the base bid, or could have been included as a change order. That's the way I could describe it.
I'm gonna go back upstream, Roland, and look at, you know, the fact that, you know, the, was, it was due diligence exercise when we put the contract together. Did we look at the areas where it were critical decision points that things would work as they did? And it appears that we did not. We assumed the valve was gonna operate easily, effectively, properly, and it didn't. And as a result, we had the, the change order. So the change order really isn't the fault of the contractor. He did what he had to do. I'm a little more concerned that we didn't do the due diligence on the part of the engineering firm when we looked at is, are all the conditions that we've listed here truly doable to make this, to have this contractor bid on this job? So, you know, did we really step through it to the level of detail necessary to make sure that the contract was doable the way it had been specked out in the contract? And what I'm hearing is, oh, guess what? That valve doesn't work, we're gonna have to do the bypass option. Guy was prepared to do it. Kudos to him for being able to step up and do it. But we probably should have had that knowledge and it, up front when we did the contract and check those things. That's all. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you. First of all, gentlemen, I want to thank you for the incredible job that you do for the city. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, especially in this town. But you do a great job and you work hard and you're very, very seasoned professional, so I want to say thank you. And hopefully you'll stay with us after tonight. I do want to comment on the process. And I think this is being highlighted, particularly in these times when municipal funds are difficult to come by. Is that I think whenever a large project goes out for bid, I think that the vendors, such as yourself, are making every attempt to come to the city with a number that the city can swallow. So I'm, I'm not saying you cut corners, but yet on the other hand, I think what you, what most contractors do is that they understand that the client only has so much money. And from what I'm hearing is that the critical assessment, as the gentleman to my left calls it, was being made as to the valve in the very, very beginning of the process when the bidding was going on, is that it was not a critical point. It was not literally a critical assessment at that point. It was something you looked at. It was something that other decisions were made. But then as time went on, things began to develop that maybe, just maybe, a different decision would be made. That is the whole point of a change order. That, that is the essence of a change order. That's why you have change orders. To allow that decision process to be fine-tuned and tweaked as you move through the process of whatever project you are on. And if we are going to critique change orders and guillotine individuals because they may have, should have made a different decision, then you are interfering with the change order process itself as you make decisions to complete a project. Because I sure don't want you to feel intimidated that you can't come to city council again with another change order and, and go through the same whatever. So I think you're doing a good job. The change order is exactly what was needed. The timing is fine. I do not see any fault in, in, in not putting it in the original bid. Saved the city some money. Don't hear anybody complaining about that. We have money in the budget to take care of it. And that's what you do when you have a construction project. You always prepare for the change orders. And if you're not, then you don't understand construction management. Because it is, change orders are just as common in that process as other. Now, if there's some critique of the process regarding should or shouldn't we, that's probably something that should be handled with the city manager and that should be handled with the, the team that is handling it. I don't think it's an appropriate discussion for here at this meeting. Thank you. But thank you, gentlemen, for everything you do.
So getting back to the change orders, change orders typically address the oops that you encounter during a project. The role of the project manager is to identify upfront, to the best degree possible, those things that can go wrong and what, what efforts can be put in place to avoid those circumstances. This is one of those things, because this was a critical point on the critical path for this thing. It had to be completed within 24 hours. Okay, you had a deadline for it. Right? Okay, so that's all. Councilmember Kibble, did you have something?
No, Lisa did.
Oh, Councilmember Dilg?
All the way down here. I just wanted to know if this is not a situation where it would have been, if we had put it in the original bid, it would have been this cost and now it's an emergency and now it's a lot more expensive. Is that correct?
That's a, that's a great question and it's very difficult to know during the bidding process how the contractor would have, would have bid exactly for that work.
Well.
But in general, we've, we've vetted the costs. We've had multiple discussions with, with DPW, with, with the city manager, with the, with the contractor, putting a, you know, a fine-tooth comb to their estimate to make sure that they're not gouging the city. I think everybody knows contractors love change orders because they can, in their minds.
So do engineers.
Value, but we fought against that and, and Mr. Varney was an advocate to make sure that the city wasn't paying for things that they shouldn't be paying for, and we looked very closely at that. Would it have been a little bit different? It would have been a little bit different two years ago when they did it, no doubt about that. Material costs were different, labor was different, but I, I think we're pretty comfortable that we're not being gouged. It's, it's similar in cost to what it would have been if it was bid in the base bid.
But there might have been a change order anyway, even if you put it in the bid based on higher prices for things two years later. Also, is that possible or no?
Hopefully not, no, we, they would be held to material costs.
They would be held to that, okay.
Unless it was, we are seeing outside of this particular contract, we are seeing contractors being pretty aggressive, trying to get additional cost to materials. Water main is two times what it was bid two years ago, but in general, no, they, they would be held to the costs in their base bid.
And these costs, they gave us these costs in early 2021. So I'm pretty sure by the time they physically got in the ground and ordering materials, I, I don't think they made much money of that.
Okay.
They made money, their contractor, they made money, but the idea is that they didn't, they didn't go to the bank.
So you don't think it would, it's a vast difference if they had put it in originally?
I, I don't believe so, no.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hanson?
Just a couple of quick questions. Thank you guys for answering all of our questions. I know we're kind of hitting you with quite a few. This is change order number three. Do you anticipate any more, any on the horizon, maybe that you're, got on your radar, or?
There will be one more. There's a little bit of extra concrete work that was needed at the filters, which we didn't see until the trees were removed, vines that were growing on the plant. And there will be, there could be some credits also, so there will be one more, I guess.
Now I guess just putting it into perspective, a project of this magnitude, as large as it is, we've got a percentage here, percent change to date, 11.18%. Is that in the ballpark that we should typically expect or see in a project of this size? Or can you maybe give us examples of?
I would, 10% is kind of what you budget for. But that also, that 11% also includes perimeter fencing all the way around it, which is kind of add-on. There's a couple other things, you know, when like DPW staff is out there, they're kind of looking at it from an operator's perspective. And they're like, well, it'd be nicer if I could do that. There's a couple little things we've added. So it, it'll be a better system for the operator.
I, I figured I'd ask, just to kind of try to give a silver lining to, to the whole picture, so, thanks.
And Mike, the project was originally budgeted at, at what, in 2018?
I think like 2018, 2019, we were over $4 million for this project.
And, and as it sits now, it's?
I think we're gonna come in about 3.7 in 2022, so. Yeah, 2019 is different than 2022.
Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Kibble?
I, I appreciate the fact that you guys are giving the opportunity for our people to be able to make suggestions that'll actually be in their best interest and what they think is the best configuration over there for them to be able to do the work, so. That, there's a lot of value there, so, thank you.
Just one last thing while we're talking about the change orders and the ones that are yet to come. So this project had a, an original substantial completion date of April sometime? Okay. And for every day that we've gone beyond that, the contractor is being charged $1,200 a day? Is that the correct amount?
Yes, that's the amount of liquidated damage.
And the same applies for going past the final completion date as well? Or that's just, it just continues on until we finish the project?
It's, the liquidated damages is just related to substantial completion.
Just substantial completion, okay. Between then and when? The actual completion date? Or the target completion date?
The substantial completion date that was written in the contract was April 24, April 8. And then substantial completion, what we are realizing as substantial completion is when both of the tanks are up and operational, all the horizontal filters are operational, which they all are now. So we need to come to a date of when substantial completion has, has happened.
So it's the, the penalty for that clause is between the projected substantial completion date and the actual substantial completion date?
Yes.
And you're still working to determine the actual substantial completion date?
Yes.
And get agreement on that?
Yep.
And it's $1,200 per day for every day within that range, right?
It is, that's what's written in the contract, the, we're still in discussions with the contractor, so.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have a, a motion from Councilmember Kurtzwell. We have a second from Councilmember Dilg. City Clerk Dayton, you wanna conduct a roll call vote there?
Hanson?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you very much, guys. We'll move on to a discussion of the, the budget. Anybody have any questions for that? Quick as one tonight. I'll open up for public comment. Again, remember the, the two-minute time allowance. Do we have any members of the audience that want to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to the managers' report with City Manager Zelnick.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. We are still waiting information for ARPA for allowable uses for those federal funds. Patricia will be preparing that information and giving a presentation at a later date. Want to remind everybody, we're in our road improvement program. We have a scheduled public informational meeting that's gonna be held tomorrow from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Here at City Hall. We also have one scheduled for Saturday, July 23rd, and that's from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And both meetings are gonna be here. We'll schedule, we're also gonna schedule homeowners association meetings. I have one scheduled right now for coming up with Colonial Acres. You see several media posts, social media posts that we've had. We've already had four out of the plan, 13 posts that we are giving to the public to advise them on the information pertaining to the road improvement program and also to the ballot proposal. The concerts in the park, I advise council members that we're still looking for individuals to introduce those bands at our concerts in the park series. Please email me, let me know what dates that you have available that you may be able to introduce those concerts. And also, based upon discussions that we've had today and based upon discussions with staff, I advise the department heads to ensure that all future packets will have completed bid information regarding all the bidders on the project, not just the ones that are awarded the bid. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Councilmember Dilg?
Thank you. With the homeowners associations, are we reaching out to them proactively or just if they contact you?
I've had contacts with one other home association. They contacted me and then the one for Colonial Acres that's scheduled this week, they contacted me as well. We did the website posts as well as social, social media to see if there's anybody that's interested. We seem to be getting a lot of hits, a lot of shares, a lot of comments, and we'll continue to do that.
So we're not gonna reach out though to homeowners?
We don't have, we don't have contact information for all those, for all the presidents or associations or anything like that, so.
It's just if they contact you?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you. Two things I want to let you know is that I have been out and about and meeting with individuals and talking about the road issue. People are very positive about it. We do have major problems with our roads. And I think people are beginning to take a look and seriously say, you know, yeah, it is time to get these roads fixed. I know everybody has a different opinion and, you know, people felt it should have been dealt with, you know, years and years ago. Well, the bottom line was, it wasn't. And I think that's what is good about this team is that we're solving problems of the past, as, as I sort of coin it. We should have had a road program many, many years ago. It should have been funded, but it wasn't. So here we are, and I think we're gonna move forward. So I just want to let you know that the information I'm getting is quite positive. It's gonna be a little bit. It's going to be a little bit of a bite, but I think people understand the necessity. Also, in your report, I was a little bit concerned about the dumping at 948 Stratford. Are you, and that's with the code enforcement? I don't know if you have any specifics on that. But the only comment I'll make on that is that I would hope, I would hope that, that that individual, regardless of what that water tests back at, if, if we have an ordinance that prohibits dumping in a storm drain, regardless of what you're dumping in there, whether it's a can of Coke or whatever, or pop, and if it's a misdemeanor or a whatever, I would hope that this city would issue a citation. This is not a sit down and let's educate you. This is a, you need to get tough. Our water supply, what goes into our storm drains is very important. This is not a laughing matter. And if that contractor doesn't do the right thing, which most, what, what most contractors do is they bring a tub with a lid on it and they take their dirty water at the end of their job and they put it in their tub and they take it home. And where they go from there, I don't know. But they don't dump it in storm drains. So I would hope that you take a very, very, very tough position on, on the individual who did this. Because this isn't the first time. And we have enough contractors in this city. I, I think that people need to understand, you leave our storm drains alone. There's too much money that, that the, that the taxpayers in the city are going to be paying for roads, for infrastructure, and then to have this going on. I remember several years ago, there was dumping of oil down there on Dixboro and Nine Mile. And some of us set up trail cams to try to catch the person who was doing it. How stupid. You can sit there and walk and you can see the oil slicks on the water, like we didn't know what was going on? This is not a dumping ground. This is not a dumping ground. So I have some opinions on that. That's the environmentalist in me coming out and would just encourage the city to be very firm about this. I was bothered by that. Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble.
Paul, did you guys investigate the idea of putting any of this information on the cable station?
As far as the posting to the meetings you're talking about?
The road bond issues.
We hadn't done the post, but that's a good idea. I'll get with Richie after the meeting and talk to them about those posts. Because we have several social media posts, but I think the maps and things like that are, are another good avenue to get out there.
Yeah, good. I really hope that we, we hit this a lot harder than where, what we've been at. I, I can understand the concern if there's some mixed messaging and things, but we need to really start screaming out that, you know, unless you're cool with the roads, we got to play and get, get things going in the right direction, so.
Councilmember Hanson?
I, I just wanted to comment on the, not to beat a dead horse, so to speak, as far as the, the trees and replacement in the city. You know, we have budgeted for replacement of trees and such. I was hoping that that could be definitely a priority as far as replacing some of the trees that we've even chopped down and, and are leaving an empty spot. So I'm hoping that we might be able to revisit that later on and, and have a plan of attack so that when it is fall, the best time to plant trees, that we do do so. Especially, you know, it'd be a great time to, to take care of it and then look forward to it next spring. One question I did have in driving around the city especially was the parking lot behind the new, soon to be Italian restaurant as well as Lake Street Tavern. The entryway has several large potholes. Are we waiting to fill those until after kind of construction's done for the Italian restaurant? Or is there a plan of attack on, on those?
I'll have to check with DPW what their plan is on that. I'm, I'm unaware of when they were doing that area or if they have not done anything within that parking lot yet.
I just wasn't sure because it was like right near where the, one of the entrance ways is. It's like right behind where the dumpster was for the construction. So I wasn't sure if there was like just coordination with the construction. So figured I'd ask.
I will contact them.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, Paul. So you, in your weekly report, you, you're canvassing for people to announce the groups at the, at the concerts in the park. If you fail to get enough volunteers, what's the fallback plan?
Will you staff, myself, other people have offered to do it as well, so.
Okay. The other thing, just to follow on from the comment the councilmember Kibble made, is, is the need to truly make a, a full court press on getting the information out. So at this point, I understand that we have sent out maybe about 1,100 absentee ballots, of which half have already been returned. And the people that get absentee ballots vote. That's why they're asking for them, probably at the rate of about 80, 90% or more. So these people that have returned them, I hope they had the message and I hope they voted to help the thing. But again, it's the need to get that information out to the folks as quickly and as thoroughly as possible, so.
Absolutely.
Look forward to the, the upcoming meetings. Councilmember Hanson?
You actually brought up an interesting point as far as absentee ballots. Is there any sort of a mailer that is going out to the absentee voters as far as the mileage? I mean, just to inform them, especially if they don't have social media or anything of that nature?
We're not sending out absentee ballots, but we have had it within the tax bill, or the utility bills to get out to the public to advise them of that. And we've had as much information we possibly can do through the city, through the, through the city signs, through the social media, through the website. You're right, we did not do any site, you know, tens of thousands, spend thousands of dollars on a mailing or anything like that. It's, most of it, you're right, is actually word of mouth these days.
Figured I'd ask, just.
Yep, I understand.
Anything else for city manager Zelnick? Thank you, Paul. We'll move on to council comments, and tonight we'll start with councilmember Dill.
Thank you. I just have one thing today. I just wanted to congratulate the organizers of the South Lion Pride event. It was an enormous success. There were over 500 people in attendance. There were over 30 booths. I really appreciated the support of some of local businesses, venue. Julie Paquette's local, is a local lawyer. Sponge Sugar, the Unitarian Church. There were a lot of different people there. It was a lot of fun, a family-friendly event. And I appreciated the community's positiveness towards it. It was great to see Nate there and councilmember Kibble. And I really appreciated the low-key presence of the police officers as well. It was nice to see them, but also, you know, let it happen. So I just thought that was a great event, something, a really nice addition to South Lion. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Dill. Councilmember Hanson?
I wanted to put it on the record, as far as the upcoming, this will be the 10th annual Fury for a Feast event happening on August 20th, 2022, which is at Brewing is putting on to raise food. It's a food drive and fundraiser for Gleaners Food Bank and Blessed is in a Backpack, the South Lion chapter. So over the last nine years, they've helped to raise over 93,000 and gathered almost 10,000 pounds of food. So they're hoping that this event will help them pass over the $100,000 mark. So they did mention that now more than ever, even though we're getting out of the pandemic, that we still do have families that are struggling in the community. And this is an opportunity to not only experience some great food, live music, some great barrel-aged beers made locally in South Lion, but it's also a way for us to, you know, pool some money as well as food resources and have a fun event that keeps the funds and the food in the community. So wanted to at least bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you. On Friday, July 8th, I was in attendance at a memorial service for Michael Kroll. He was a police officer who was violently ambushed by a sniper, who, and, and he was actually killed during this while he was actually protecting protesters at an anti-police brutality march in Dallas, Texas. This sniper attack occurred in 2016, was well-publicized. And in memory of her son who lives in the area, Michael Kroll, the service was held in South Lion and extremely well-attended. Prior to accepting a position with the Dallas Police Department, Officer Kroll was also a deputy with the Wayne County Sheriff's Department. So I would like to thank all those who attended the service, all the law enforcement that was there that came in from around the country into our wonderful city of South Lion. I'd also like to thank the members from the Wayne County Sheriff's Department, the Wayne County Color Guard, members of the Dallas Police Department, elected officials, the members of the public. And most importantly, I'd like to thank South Lion Chief of Police, Christopher Sovik. Chief Sovik was publicly recognized as being in attendance at this event, and he was so well-received by his fellow law enforcement officers. So thank you, Chief Sovik. You gave the city of South Lion a very, very, very good look. And thank you for extending your condolences to this mother who lost her son to a sniper, and he was protecting protesters. Her heart was just broken. And I sat there, when I sat there in that service, I looked around and I said to myself, would, would I ever take a profession where I would offer my life up for another individual? And when I looked around that church and I saw those law enforcement individuals from all over the country at this event, I thought to myself, I don't think so. But boy, I'll tell you, every one of them would, every single one of them, every single one of them. So thank you, Chief Sovik. You extended condolences and sympathies to a very grieving mother. And I think it's important, we need to understand that this divisiveness that is out there in this country today with regard to police, it really does need to stop. Next, speaking of sponsors, well, speaking of sponsors, I would like to thank the following sponsors for their sponsorship in the Lake Street Cruisin' this week. This meeting, I'd like to thank East Lake Dental, Shadow Rods, The Corner Social, and Stone Depot. Please support these businesses, please. Thank you, everybody, and have a safe week.
Thank you, councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kibble?
I had an interesting week in that with the election coming up, we've, I, I've just stumbled into it. Some friends had kind of pushed me in that direction. But Alyssa Slotkin had gone to the, the War Memorial or War Dog Memorial with the, he's the secretary of the VA, and off the top of my head, I've forgotten his name now. But it was actually a remarkable thing that somebody on the cabinet would end up being in our backyard to see this dog memorial. And I mean, it really gives you some, some understanding of the, the honor and importance of these animals. And I thought that was very cool. And to see Alyssa again on Saturday at the Pride event, that was another real nice push. I'm, I'm hoping like crazy that everything works out and she's, she's going to end up being our, our representative, so. And that, that event itself was just delightful. It was really well-attended with some wonderful weather. And for those of you that know Thad Bogart, he had his gear, his new gear out there. And it was really great, great music and nice and clear. And people that were speaking to the public, their speeches came through nice and clear. So sometimes when you have sort of portable microphones and things, it's pretty garbled up and it's difficult to understand what people are saying. So it was, I, I was wanting to thank him for extending himself and his equipment out like that. So that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Moser?
Yeah, I just want to echo councilmember Dill with the Pride event was quite successful this weekend. So was the farmer's market. And what I noticed is they would start at the farmer's market and end up down at the Pride event. Or they started at the Pride event and came back down to the farmer's market. We were so busy. And it was just nice to see everybody out. It was just so refreshing to see so many new faces, so many coming through. We see new faces every week at the farmer's market. It's just nice to see people out and enjoying themselves, bringing the kids out. And I hope that they all come out for Motor Fest too. That's going to be a great, another great event for our downtown. I'm hoping the overflow from these smaller events and the larger ones are hitting all our restaurants, all our shops, and all our downtown. I think it's, this summer has really shaped up. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember Moser. Just two, two quick things this evening. First, I want to congratulate the Kensington Valley Civident Club on their second youth entrepreneur market on July 9th. They had some very talented individuals there with some great products available for sale. And if you haven't had the chance to visit yet, I would encourage you to make a point to do so and help support these folks and their foray into the business world. The event is held in the grassy area between Big B Coffee and Lucas Coney Island. And the next event will be held on Saturday, August 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So America calendars now. And I also want to remind everyone that the Furry Friends Rescue will be at the farmer's market on Saturday, July 30th, collecting returnable bottles and cans to help fund their efforts. So remember to drop by and drop off your bags of returnables to help this organization as they work to find permanent loving homes for pets. That's all we have this evening. I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Move to adjourn?
Adjourn. Have a good week, guys.